All right, thank you so much. At this time, we are going to go ahead and call the meeting to order with a roll call. Councilmember Adam.
Say here.
Here, sorry.
Councilmember Maldonado.
Present.
Councilmember Bucialato.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mendoza.
Here.
Mayor Walter, here. At this time, let's rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where wishes stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to our first call to the public and our call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the Town Council, and Council rules that public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to those criticisms made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, the members of the council shall not discuss or act on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. Is there anybody that wishes to speak at this time? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor Walter, members of Town Council, members of the public who are joining us here this evening, both in present and online. My name is Rita Ann Resnick, and I am the Director of Public Relations for the Florence Unified School District. I am also here this evening representing the Friends of Florence Kids First Foundation. Say that five times really fast, it's a lot of fun. So I would like to publicly thank the Town of Florence, Mayor Walter, for your sponsorship of the 2024 Barbecue Pig Master Challenge that took place this past Saturday, November 2nd, on Main Street in Florence. It was a highly successful event, and this event benefits the students of Florence Unified School District in the form of graduating senior scholarships. I also want to publicly thank Town Councilmember Nicole Bucialato, as well as Mayor-elect Keith Eaton, and Town Councilmember-elect Tony Bencina, who all offered to participate as barbecue tasting judges on Saturday, and I hope you enjoyed some delicious barbecue. Again, events like this could not take place without your sponsorship and support. So on behalf of the students, the school district, and the foundation, I just want to say thank you very much. We truly hope to continue this event for many more years to come, and with your sponsorship and support, we can do just that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Bedford.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I just wanted to let you all know that I did a tour over at the cemetery, and I just wanted to see if I could make like a little suggestion. When I did drive through, you didn't know what sections that you were in, and I realized that the library has the equipment, and it would be really nice if we were able to make the, I believe it's the metal where you cut out, and we make signs for the cemetery. And I was hoping that we were, you know, we could do that as a, as council. And that is it.
All right, thank you so much. IC Director Paul King writing down your suggestion, and I'm sure he's going to follow up with you. So thank you. I'm always on board for improving our cemeteries and facilities. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? All right, we're closing the first call to the public. Moving on to our public hearings and our presentations. So for item A, we are actually going to be removing this item this evening. The public hearing to receive comment on the conditional use permit to install an RV board storage facility at 917 South Panera Parkway, PZ 24-30. The public hearing will not be held. Item referred back to Planning and Zoning Commission based on an inadvertent open meeting law violation. Is that correct, Ms. Garcia?
Um, yes, and the only reason why it's on the agenda is because it was advertised online on the property that they would have a public hearing, so to make sure that anybody who saw that showed up tonight, that we would make sure that we would let them know that it's going back to planning and zoning, and it's going to come back up through the process. And again, the clerk's office, we check both our agendas and our work session and our work and our action minutes to make sure everything's held, and sometimes there's a little bit of a hiccup when it gets down into us comparing against the actual minutes because it may take some time. So we do apologize for not noticing this earlier. We did go back and we did do an audit on the boards and commissions, which we do each time we find an error, and we went back to 2022, found no other additional items to list, and therefore we're just voiding out the public hearing and the recommendation, asking for it to go back, and then it will come forward on a normal pace.
All right, thank you for that explanation. Moving on to item B, we have a presentation of a service award recognizing Andrew Salazar Jr. At this time, I am going to turn it over to our Chief of Police and Town Manager.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, this is Officer Andy Salazar, and he recently retired from the Florence Police Department after serving 20 years. In his presentation, he got one of the limited edition Chief's Challenge Coins, and the reason he got that is this guy probably has one of the best senses of integrity that I've witnessed, and I just appreciate his leadership, I appreciate his team-based concepts with training our new troops, and I can tell you, he's going to be sorely missed in our police department. So we'd like to go ahead and recognize him, council, if you will, go ahead and come down. We'd like to go ahead and recognize him for his 20 years of service to the Florence Police Department.
They did. You guys have a strong brotherhood. You came up here to support, so we want to make sure you guys can all be together. Officer Salazar, this is our Making a Difference Award, and we would like to present this to you on behalf of Mayor and Council for your service.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to say thank you, Town Council, all Town employees, and the good citizens of Florence. I really appreciate it. I had fun.
What was your favorite part?
Just helping, well, retiring? Oh, there's a lot, but I don't want to say.
Well, we have one more item for you, so please stand. So this is. All right, rarely, how many times have you guys seen somebody walk away with two items to put on their shelf, recognizing their achievements and their accomplishments in their career with the Town of Florence? Usually, we put it, oh. Okay, usually, we put everything all into one, but we wanted to separate this out because not only do we have your exemplary service that you've committed in the Town of Florence, see, I said that like it was a legal term. We also have your years of service, so I want to present to you. Are we ready? This is what this says. This says, and it's gorgeous, awarded to Andrew Salazar Jr. for your dependable service, your years of dedication, and you are greatly valued as an essential member of our team. The Town of Florence, are you guys ready for this? 20 years of service. Let's give him a standing round of applause. 20 years watching the department grow from one station to an evidence tech addition to a second station, the substation up in Anthem at Merrill Ranch, to going from, when I was elected to council in 2012, we only had two officers on duty, and now we are fully staffed. We have officers that are actively patrolling, whether they're walking, biking, or in their patrol vehicles, all areas of our community, and you've watched our community, because it's been under your leadership as well, become the safest community multiple years in a row. So let's, one more round of applause, because this is a huge accomplishment. And then I wanted you to also, I thought you were gonna, you had a little, add on to that, but I might have stole your.
You did. You know, I've kind of said it all in regards to you when we did your retirement ceremony. But I can go ahead and tell you once again is we appreciate your leadership, how you've helped train a lot of the newer officers that we've had come in, and we always believe Florence PD, what? Our citizens first, and you exemplified that. So once again, appreciate you, appreciate 20 years of service. That is one heck of a whole lot of service that you've dedicated to your community. So congratulations, and we wish you the best in your retirement.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, it's not often we get to recognize someone from a statewide standpoint, and tonight, we're here just to do that. Lisa Lewis is our library manager. She has spent the last three years as president-elect and president of the Arizona Library Association. She has turned that organization around. She, I've gotten emails and testimonials from plenty of her peers throughout the state applauding her efforts, her tireless work. She started the organization when she was working for the Town of Cholo. The Town of Florence supported that, and the leadership in Florence here has continued that support to see her through her tenure, and she has planned conferences, amazing conferences. I was able to attend one, both of them, last year and this year, and Lisa's done a great job. She has shown her leadership in her industry, and not only that, but to her staff. So I'd like to invite Lisa and her staff up to join you, and I'd like to give Lisa the opportunity to have a few words as well on her experience over the last three years. And I apologize, the award itself is the Newton and Betty Rosenwick Distinguished Services Award, and it's a prestigious award from the association. So Lisa, come on up with your team.
I did not speak in the microphone. Where's Lisa? Between all of the amazing programs that Lisa, you, and your team have brought to the Florence Library, it's nothing short of stellar. Anytime if a citizen needs any items, they'll in our library loan it. If you need to know how to use any of the equipment, the staff will take the time, they will walk you through the equipment. If you're interested in something and you share it with the staff, they'll look into it, and nine times out of 10, add whatever it is that the community is asking for into the library for use. Lisa, would you like to say a few words and share? I mean, this is an amazing accomplishment and award, and we're proud, we're so proud to have you and your team leading the way.
So this is nothing that I really am comfortable with. If you want to talk about the library and the library staff, I'm all over that, because they are amazing people, and I would not be able to have even done what I did with the Arizona Library Association without their support. So I really greatly appreciate all of my staff. Again, it's uncomfortable for me to get any kind of attention, I just do this job because I love it, and I want to serve my community to the best of my ability, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Town Manager Bruce Walls. I am going to turn the next two over to you, and you can either take them in order or out of order, whichever you choose. When I saw presentation for the opioid overdose and treatment program, that was really like, I figured we can start up here and then go down there, if that's something that works for you.
Yes, ma'am, that's fine.
Okay.
So Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, the Florence Police Department has been involved in opioid program since 2021, so three-year program that we've been wrapped up in. Understanding the difficulties, I guess, of the opioid epidemic, this program allowed us to, when we went out on overdose call, it would allow us to go ahead and leave a little vial of Narcan behind. And what this would go ahead and do, let's say that there was another overdose, it would leave the family members with the means to go ahead and treat the overdose. Now, it's kind of a, I guess, controversial type program, but we wanted to make sure that we extended our hand to make sure that we save lives in the case that, that type of measure was needed. So once again, this is recognition from the Public Health Excellence in Law Enforcement Award, and it was awarded to the Florence Police Department, and I'd like for our police department to come up and receive award, and if council would be so kind to come down and present that to them and take a picture with them, that would make us very happy.
Thank you, I'll use it.
Hello, ma'am.
Hello, how are you? This is the Public Health Excellence in Law Enforcement. This is issued to the Town of Florence Police Department, and I'm going to get you guys a frame. I will, I will bring it by tomorrow, I apologize, but I wanted you guys to be able to have this this evening, and you guys are going to be front and center. You get to say a few words.
Thank you very much for this award.
Well, you guys are amazing, they are very modest as well. Let's give these gentlemen in our department a round of applause.
Yes, ma'am. So I'll go ahead and tell you that Armored Rills is brand new, this is like his first week here at the department. So that's why I didn't probably have much to go ahead and say. But we awarded him today, we gave him his oath of office at the police department today, and we really set you in the ring of fire tonight. We found out that you're not very verbal, but that's okay. And council, if you don't know, he is one of our trucking enforcement officers, so we brought him over from ADOT. So again, congratulations, appreciate all the work that you all do, and you know what you do on a daily basis in regards to drug overdose. This is a program that puts us on the foothold of being able to go in and at least render a service to those types of victims. So again, appreciate what you guys do every single day, and making sure that you make sure that Florence stays one of the safest communities in the state of Arizona. Thank you. So I was at a recent PRTA meeting, and the director came to me and said, we want you to go ahead and present an award to the mayor for seven years of service on this particular committee. Now, what I'm going to go ahead and tell you, Mayor, is we want to go ahead and pull this, and I want to bring it back to you on the 18th, because there's an award that you're supposed to go ahead and receive, and I don't have it yet. So I want to see if we can go ahead and, Lisa, put this on the 18th agenda, so that we can come back and recognize Mayor Tara Walter for outstanding service, seven years of service on this committee. You will allow me to go ahead and do that, I'd appreciate that, and yes, ma'am, I'll turn it over.
I would be remiss if I did not take this opportunity to also thank Vice Mayor Mendoza for all of his active contributions, and our entire council for active contributions in the realm of transportation and improving transportation infrastructure in and around our community. I just want to also remind everybody that there is an issue on the ballot. Now, this is a public forum, so we cannot say whether to vote for or against, but we could only provide the factual information, and there is Prop 439, which would allow for funding that is already being collected to be utilized to improve the infrastructure, specifically the roads. So please vote. All right, we're going to table that. All right, moving on to item seven is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is authorization to enter into a cooperative use contract with Norcon Industries for the installation of new scoreboards at the Heritage Park ballfields at a cost not to exceed $97,023.35. Item B, approval to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Penale County to be a part of the Penale Regional Special Investigations Unit. Item C, approval of the October 7th and October 21st, 2024 Town Council Minutes. Item D is to receive and file the following board and commission minutes. Charles Whitlow Rodeo Ground's Advisory Committee Minutes of September 26th. Charles Whitlow Rodeo Grounds Advisory Committee Minutes of September 26, 2024. Planning and Zoning Commission Minutes of September 26, 2024. Florence Teen Council Minutes of July 21st and September 11th, 2024. Approval for the police department to participate in the Law Enforcement Support Office, LESO, program. Ladies and gentlemen, that is our consent agenda. Is there anybody that has any item they want removed at this time?
A.
A.
I'd like to pull item C, just October 21st.
All right. Mayor staff pulled item B. And that is correct, staff pulled item B at this time. So I need approval to approve item D and E from the consent agenda at this time, and item B is pulled.
With D and E, correct. I'd like to approve the consent agenda items D and E.
Second.
Can I have a, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Councilmember Neil, item A.
Item A, I'm all for item A. The reason I'm pulling is because I remember our last meeting, we were discussing the new playground equipment, and I seen that we had budgeted $150,000, and we're coming in under $100,093, I believe, on the scoreboards. Just want that extra funding to go toward our playground equipment.
Mr. King, would you like to respond?
Sure, Mayor, would you like me to present the item? Or just answer the question?
Respond to Councilmember Neil's request.
Sure. We will certainly work with finance to, as we do with all of our projects that are under or over, to work with funding on addressing that. And we'll work with Finance Director to plan that, if that's what council like. We can bring another phase of the playground to council, potentially with additional funding from this and any of our capital project savings.
I just wanna make sure it keeps going. It phases sometimes, phase out. I wanna make sure it keeps going, there's money available, grab it and go.
Yes, we do understand that you already had the area planned and the equipment purchased, as well as, you know, moving forward, as we have been. I believe the term with that next phase, if we can bring that forward, just to set that in motion, that would be appreciative, especially since we've already identified the funding sources that we already have available. And I believe council overall will give direction on that, is that correct?
Mayor and Councilmember Neil, do we want to specify, as I remember, a lot of the discussion was around the swings and having not enough. So do we want to direct that these monies first be directed at swings?
And shade. And shade.
And shade.
Yes. But just to make sure, like, as appropriate, as they expand it, to make sure that there's appropriate.
Swings was the primary.
And a fence. All right, thank you Director King. Councilmember Neil, would you like to approve that now? Or make a motion now?
I would like to make a motion to approve item A on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Adam, item C.
Yes, I just had a comment to make on the October 21st meeting, and it relates to the Heritage Park playground issue. When we were talking about it, I think it kind of caught us off guard that we didn't really know what was going on there. So I did go back, and we did approve the funding at the September 3rd meeting. However, shame on me, we approved the funding without any pictures, without any listing of equipment. So my only comment would be, for every time we're approving funding without any specific knowledge of what exactly it is, we need to call that out earlier, right? Instead of letting it go so far. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve item C, October 21st, 2024.
Second.
All right, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And motion carries. Item 8A, new business. Item 8A is discussion approval disapproval of reappointment of Emma Coffey and Xavier Fedora to the Florence Town Council with terms expiring October 1st, 2026, and appoint Kayla Clark to an alternate position with a term expiring October 1st, 2026, Ms. Garcia.
Good evening. We're very pleased to bring forth the recommendations of the liaisons who serve on that committee. We do have a person that we're appointing as an alternate, and then today we also received a second alternate application, so we'll be bringing that. Then we will be complete, we will have two board members, and we will also have two alternates. And what that means is that in May, if our two seniors leave, those two alternates will automatically be placed on and begin working, so it will be seamless. And then we'll go back out and start advertising for alternates again. We were just checking to make sure that the second alternate is inside, attending ALA inside the town limits and not ALA in Queen Creek. So depending on that verification means what will happen at the next meeting. And we are, with this motions that you will be making, we are back up, our current board members are coming back. And just to remind council, we will have the teens on the stage at the next meeting. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Which is so exciting, I'm so looking forward to that. Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Adam?
I'd like to make a comment, so Teen Councilmember Javier Fedora happens to be the one paired with me. And I had the great pleasure of sitting with him last week. He is a wonderful young man, he's in 10th grade. I was gonna say only in 10th grade, but he's very young. And I just wanna read from his application about why he's applying to serve on the teen council. It's because he's passionate about making a positive impact on my community. And you can't ask for better than that, so.
I am glad that you shared that with everybody. With that, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the teen council members and alternate as written.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion carries. Item B is discussion approval disapproval to enter into a cooperative use contract with Ripple Industries using the Mojave Cooperative, 219 PS 18-01 for job order contracting SCADA systems to provide the installation of the SCADA system and a SCADA on a new lift station for the Northwest Water Treatment Plant abandonment project in the amount not to exceed $1,050,704.60, Mr. Chris Salas.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Tonight, in front of the council for approval of award of contract is a supervisor control and data acquisition software package, often referred to as SCADA in the industry of water and wastewater and general utilities. This will allow staff to be able to monitor on the water side the wells, when they're running, the storage tanks, the boosters, the pressures, any of those, any of the parameters within the treatment facilities that have the requisite data acquisition. It will also allow us, for authorized users, to make certain changes on not just a read, but if you will, a control, which could allow boosters to be overridden from either an office or from a home to expedite certain things. This does also have, in the inclusion of it, is some more wastewater that was left over for our North Wastewater Treatment Plant abandonment project. That lift station would be integrated in this project, so that all of the software and all the hardware would work together with that. Are there any questions as it relates to the SCADA item tonight?
I do not see any. Councilmember Maldonado?
I'd just like to say this is a great idea, 'cause I was in the water business for six months, and I know how great it was to be able to actually get that notification, hey, something's wrong, and then being able to react with haste, especially when it's over the weekend or something, long period of time. So I think this is a real good idea.
Seeing none further, Mr. Salas, did you wanna add anything before I ask for a motion?
Strangely enough, yes. Wanting to be brief, I did not mention, and I should have, as Councilmember Maldonado just said, one of the overriding features for the SCADA system is that there are alarms built into all these different parameters, more relevant probably on the wastewater side, but not necessarily. So on the water side, if a storage tank was getting too low or approaching the threshold for the requisite fire flows, we would get an alarm and let us know. So even if you're, I don't know, 9:30 at night, Sunday night, your phone's going to beep, and there's gonna be a message that you're gonna go in and log in and say, oh, we're low. It won't necessarily tell you why you're low, but just the fact that you're low, a person then would be, go into the site and then determine, why is the well not running, or why is the, you know, so. So that, yes, those alarms are very integrated into that system, and will hopefully help us be without service for longer intervals than necessary.
That was excellent addition, thank you for that. With that, we will need a motion on this item.
I make a motion that we approve item 8B as written.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. These next two items, it's been great watching them come forward and come through the pipeline. This is discussion approval disapproval of awarding the pre-construction services contract to Jay Benicki Construction. This is for Project T112 Highway, Hunt Highway and Addaway Intersection Improvements. This is in the amount of $169,023, plus there is a 10% contingency of $16,902.30 for a total not to exceed the amount of $185,925.30, Mr. Salas.
So, this project now is going to supersede T91. For all the people in the audience or on television, this at one point was just an intersection improvement, and has now turned into some additional widening for future growth. So this project, once again, as discussed previously, will start off on the western edge of the six-lane facility, and now will go all the way to about a quarter mile next to Felix. And good news is, that I stated in the last meeting, that Polte will be doing their improvement as well, so we're getting another about 700 feet of improvement on this project. And then we'll be widening to the south along Addaway to transition from those two lanes into the turn lanes that are necessary for this project to work. With that said, there are two distinct contracts as part of this, and I will only be addressing on this item the pre-construction. So as part of the construction manager at risk, there is a requirement in the state law for us to have the contractor participate in the pre-design. So the advantage to that and this contract is that they will help the town phase the project in such a way, not only to hopefully be the most cost savings in it, but also the expectations of how we will tie into this project to have the least impact to the residents as possible. So that could include certain considerations of night work, weekend work, phasing the project. Any of those things could become, could come up as part of this project there. So they will participate in the, and have participated in the pre-design for, like you said, value engineering, cost savings, and just expediency as a whole. This is our second construction manager at risk contract in my eight years, five months. So I know this is not a process that we're very familiar with, so if there's any questions that relates to the CMR process in general or in specific, what we're discussing tonight on the T112. Are there any questions?
No, I don't see any questions. But I'm really, I really am excited about these projects moving forward. Again, it ties back to improving the infrastructure and transportation flow. So seeing no questions, can we have a motion, please?
I make a motion that we approve the awarding of the pre-construction service contract to Jay Benicki Construction for Project T112 Hunt Highway, Addaway Intersection.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion carries. Item D is your next item, and this is discussion approval disapproval of awarding a CMR construction services contract, GMP number one, SCIDD crossing at Addaway Road to Jay Benicki Construction for Project T112, Hunt Highway and Addaway Intersection Improvements, in an amount not to exceed $643,830.39. And to approve a one-week shutdown of Addaway Road, Mr. Chris Salas.
Important thing to note on this item before we discuss the specifics is that this project, I believe, is budgeted for $8.65 million this fiscal year. So obviously, $643 is a portion of this project. You will see minimally an additional second GMP, referred to as GMP 2, and quite possibly a third GMP, depending on how we break that down. It's possible that the traffic signal equipment could be ordered early through the town, and that would be GMP 2, and then as the plans are finished off, there would be a GMP 3. So upfront, I want to warn, this will not be the last time that we're awarding a GMP to Benicki Construction. We are not going out, as part of it, now we've selected the contractor through the last item, as pre-construction, and now we'll be moving through there, so there won't be no more formal process of procurement or selection of a contractor. GMP 1 includes all of the construction to allow us to move forward in the future, but this construction has to take place during the once-time-of-the-year dry-up period by the San Carlos Irrigation Project and/or San Carlos Irrigation Drainage District. Again, SCID is the operator of the system, skip is the owner of the system. So we have, I believe, depending on, formally, we have till December the 15th to finish everything within that dry-up period. And this is just for those improvements in there. If we were to miss this dry-up period, we would be waiting one additional year to move forward on the construction of it. We have now finished our right-of-way exhibits, so we are in the process of formally now going through the right-of-way acquisition now that those documents had to be revised through some changes of the scope of work. And then concurrently, we'll be looking at the right-of-way acquisitions while we move forward to 100% design plans, and then construction. With that, are there any questions as it relates specifically to the agenda item about the San Carlos Irrigation Project improvements to facilitate the future right-of-way roadway improvements related to T112?
Just to clarify the question you just said, because you said that, that obviously this is an evolving project. The map, I'm away from it now, but the map that was supplied in the scope of work that showed the intersection as it was designed, is that anticipated to change, or is that pretty stationary?
No, we are, we are widening to the west, sorry, we are widening to the east to tie into the western edge of Pulte's property, which I believe is 59A, but it could be B or it could be C, but it is unit 59. And it's just a small sliver, they have approximately 660 feet of improvement. But the last thing we wanted to do, once we found out that they were doing that improvement, was to widen, transition neck down, and then widen. It just makes sense that the, the term would be logical termini. This is the logical termini, so we're going to tie into Pulte. We met with Pulte last week, I believe either Wednesday or Thursday evening, and we're hoping to do this as, you know, essentially, from the public's eye, one project. But the town has utilized the CMR process to move this. But our CMR contractor, in theory, will be allowed to bid on the Pulte work and, and hopefully be awarded so that it is one seamless project. But if not, it'll be managed from the public's perception as one project.
Just hypothetically, it's on page 324 on the agenda, the map. It'd be great just for future reference to put that up there so the public can see what we're discussing and see where these items are placed, because it's, I mean, we all know what that intersection means, but the picture online actually does go into greater detail as to what the lanes would look like. And I know when we discussed future development in the past, that, that intersection was a point of sort of contention as far as northbound into the Anthem area, and that there, that was essentially going to be a dead end, if I remember correctly. Are they planning on developing that? I know it's not necessarily in the scope of this, but it does relate to it. Is that road north going to be built? Is that the one you're, you're referencing now?
The town's responsibility would end at the returns. We would not be building what it, what would appear to be on the developer's property. We would do the curb returns and where it becomes tangential, where it would tie in as a straight line. That's where we would end, which is the way that municipal government would be, is the back of the return. So the ADA ramp, when it, the curve, that's where it would end, and then the development community would tie into that. And we are having meetings with that develop, those two development teams and sharing plans, and we're starting to share plans with Pulte as well. It's, it's sometimes hard to coordinate because their, their, their schedule can be ahead of us one day, behind us the next, and then they're not even doing that improvement by the time that we get started. So hopefully, that they are very motivated, Pulte says they're very motivated to finish this, and we can just tie in and, like I said, have a seamless project.
Yeah, because they are starting, someone's starting development, I guess, I don't know. I could presumably believe it's Pulte, but it could be another developer that's starting some type of development that's right there along Hunt Highway. And so I'm like, we need to make sure that we're staying consistent with their projects that are in the surrounding areas, and also making sure that the roadways are consistent with the overall traffic flow. I know that there's like segments that we're in charge of, and there's other segments that they're building, but I know we've had issues with that in the past. So just trying to build on that continuous path, like you said, I think it's important that we have that transparency.
The unit they're building, I believe, is 59B, and it's not part of Hunt Highway. They're moving forward on Hunt Highway on a non-final-platted unit. So they do not have the ability right now. Epcor will not sign their final plat. So they're wanting to move forward on the improvement. And like I said, I think it only benefits the town to have a little bit longer run and not have to, one day, go in and obliterate all of our striping on our brand-new road. But at some point, we'll never be able to build a roadway, I don't know, three, four miles long. It's going to be somewhat pieced. And that'll happen along Arizona Farms one day, it'll happen down Felix one day. So I mean, that's just, that's the price of development.
I think that the overall message I was talking about, too, is that I know at one point we had a different plan for, or different development plan for this area, that we end up having to skip over because of the timing of everything and having to get the right right-of-ways and all of that. So I wanted to just make sure that the timing this time is so important that we are being consistent with all the development that's already happening so that we're not behind or ahead. So like you, and I, you touched on that, so we're good.
Are there any other questions or comments? With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve item D as written.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Salas. Item nine is our town manager report.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, plenty of items in the monthly report for you to go ahead and review, but I'd like to draw a highlight to November 14th. We'll be doing another morning mingle out at the Sun City Community Center. It's a great opportunity for our section heads to get out and interact with the community. And we're also going to go ahead and highlight a quick little snippet of what our Citizen Academy is going to look like in the early part of next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving into our department reports, does any member of council have any questions or comments for them? Mr. King, I just wanted to make the comment that the artwork that was contained in your report is beautiful. Love the colors, and there's a lot of progress going on in the areas. So thank you for that. This is our second call to the public. If there's any member of the public or online that would like to speak, this is your second opportunity. Okay, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close that. And item 12 is our call to the council for current events only. Councilmember Neil.
First off, I attended the Florence High School Hall of Fame induction. It was very nice. Some good athletes went in, my big cousin me, and my high school quarterback went in. So congratulations to those guys. Also, Ms., she's usually online, but I was here online, but Ms. Sherry Har presented two people going into the hall, and she gave me a shout-out. And I'd really like to thank her and give her a shout-out back. And she gave us a Go Gophers. So there you go, Ms. Har, thank you. The Gophers beat ALA Friday in ALA. Wonderful, it was beautiful. So they go in playoffs, they got their first playoff game at home against Wickenburg Friday. So come out and support the Gophers. The lights at the Roundabout. Jeff Graves has been giving me updates. I just keep forgetting to say it. We're waiting on, what did you tell me? Waiting on APS to come in and do some things and get the lights going up at the Roundabout. So that'll be good. I think we just about ready. Last thing is the barbecue showdown. It spoke for itself. I needed help to get in the truck. I ate so much brisket. It was wonderful. It was a beautiful day. Go Gophers.
Yes, so as liaison to Penel Partners, I attended the last meeting with Mayor-elect Keith Eaton, and it was all about workforce housing. And I just wanted to report back that I learned something. It's called horizontal density rather than vertical, because I know there's a lot of community uproar about going two, three stories high. There is an absolutely beautiful development at Schnepp Farms, and it was very interesting to see. And there were three other developers there. So there's a lot of opportunity for workforce housing that I think is applicable to Florence. The other liaison I has, have is to HDAC, and it was an interesting conversation. So there is a project going on, you might have seen online, with the PEG Arts Center and the Havelinas. The one that was presented to HDAC was what I would call a courtesy call on HDAC to make sure there were no issues with the district, but it is between the PEG Arts Center, a private organization with private businesses. So have, if you've seen that, that's what's going on. I believe there will be a later update from our Community Services Department talking about public art. The last thing I did want to say is, and congratulations, the barbecue was terrific, our Fright Night is terrific, all of our activities are great. But I would ask the town to consider, when we're closing off our streets, the businesses, especially if you're closing them off Thursday night, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, for places like a coffee shop and a fitness center, which rely on the morning business in and out quick, we have to do a better job of notifying, whether it's just a Facebook post, but I think we all would like to know when our Main Street's going to be shut down, not just the businesses, but us residents that travel that. So I'd like to see us do a little better job on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Buchalato?
So Ms. Adam touched on quite a bit of it, but I just wanted to say thank you for, Rita, for allowing me to be a part of the, the judging for the barbecue. I was not ready. Had my fat pants on, but I would still was not ready for all the tasting that happened. And I just wanted to say that it was such a good turnout again, and the weather was beautiful. And I hope you guys hit your, your quota that you guys were trying to reach because I know I contributed even more after that, because then I went for ice cream because I just hadn't had enough, I guess, and I, I overindulged that day. But it was just nice to see all the people out and about, and the businesses were packed. And I just think all the good things, you know, that Florence does. I did get some feedback about, from a business, from the, for the roads being closed, closed for three days, from Fright Fest to this event. So maybe have one side street open on each side, or something to be able to make it a little easier. And I think for the Fright Fest, it wasn't easy for a lot of people with strollers to get around, because some people had items in the walkways of the sidewalk that were participating in the trunk retreat. I saw two people kind of struggling to get around those things. So maybe keep the sidewalks clear just for safety purposes in those with strollers and wagons. Other than that, I think that our town really killed it this weekend in bringing people here. I mean, there was just so many people all weekend long. So to me, those are just little, little things compared to what, what good was, was had and, and what it did for our businesses. I did want to just say that if any police or if anybody here recognizes somebody that's in need of housing, that the Horizons here in town, over by the cafe and that little depot over there, they have a homeless outreach unit. So if there was anybody that you were to find that was, you know, displaced, couldn't, couldn't get somewhere, or struggling with somewhere to live, they have a really good resource, and it's at the Horizons here in town. So I, I can't get to my phone to give you the number, I wasn't prepared for that. But they do have a homeless outreach unit that can try to get treatment, assistance, or housing. So I just wanted to share that resource with everybody because just, it makes me think of the other day when that gentleman kind of was breaking into businesses because he didn't want to get out of jail. And I think that we need to, to do, not that anybody could prevent these kind of things from happening, but if we had more resources available for people like that, I know a big chunk of our crime wouldn't be happening because I can think of two vehicles and about six businesses that have been broken to by people that were released from jail in the past year. So I just wanted to share that resource. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Maldonado?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I got to attend Fright Fest last week, and it was my first time going to one of those, and it was pretty awesome. I had fun, and my wife did, too. So it was nice seeing all the businesses that were open, when traditionally, I remember in the past where there were events and a lot of businesses were closed. So kudos to those businesses that stayed open and were able to bring folks in. A lot of constituents were very pleased with that. And I, I can't wait till next, next year. Second thing is, I just wanted to wish all the veterans on Monday, Happy Veterans Day. There are a lot of veteran service, pardon me, there's a lot of veteran service organizations out there, there, and businesses, they're doing a lot of free and/or reduced things. So just, just go online and find out and make sure you enjoy with, with other veterans. Make sure you thank a veteran if you see him. A lot of them are very humble, and, and this is their day to, to, to be able to converse and talk about some of the things that they do and have done in the past, because active duties also are considered veterans as well. With that being said, I'm also inviting everybody to the Elks. We'll be having a grand unveiling of their veterans park on Saturday at three, three o'clock. So we've been invited as, as town officials to go and, and check it out. Please sign up online for, for your meal ahead of time, please. And I look forward to, to converse with folks out there. Thank you.
Councilmember Larson?
I think everything's been said. So I hope everyone has a fantastic rest of your holiday season and getting ready for Thanksgiving and all the festivities that we're going to have coming, and, and then we get Christmas. So I'm super excited about that. Florence, this is the most fun time to be in Florence. It really is. The holidays around here are just fantastic. So I'm looking forward to it.
We're like a Hallmark movie. Vice Mayor Mendoza?
It looks like most things have been covered. The only thing I want to say is, in doing this construction for the roads, that we keep our sister cities involved and informed of what we're doing when we close roads. And, and let's do a really, really good job of informing our citizens of when these roads are going to be closed so they can prepare. I know we need to get in contact with the school for buses and, and a bunch of different things. So let's make sure we're making those notifications. That's all I have.
Well, thank you. I have just a few items. I wanted to also echo a little bit off of Councilmember Neil talking about our local high school team. This is the first time, I mean, I've lived here for 20 years, so it's got to be longer than 20 years, that Florence High School Football, the state playoffs, the first round, they're playing it here on our field. No? We've had it before then? Well, hey, this is why I defer to you, Councilmember Neil, to share those experiences, because it's been a long time. I mean, when's the last time? Do you recall? 10 years ago. Okay, so a decade. In all fairness, my children are very young. They are a nine-and-one season. They have played some really hard teams, and these young athletes have pulled together and rallied. So they will be playing Wickenburg here this coming Friday night. So I encourage the town to come out and support. I'm sure that there's going to be fireworks. So people that live in the surrounding area, please be aware. And we do hope that everybody comes out and participates. Halloween is always fantastic. It's growing. Mr. King, fantastic job on Main Street. And many thanks with the partnerships that we've had with the businesses. And I know 520 Events has also joined efforts, and I want to say thank you for those opportunities. As Councilmember Larson said, we're moving into junior parada season, Thanksgiving weekend, and then the first Friday in December, we will have our Christmas on Main Street. So it's a delightful event, and it really does turn our town into Hallmark, like you're waiting for something to happen. And it's fantastic. I want to also recognize the fact, and I think somebody on our council alluded to it earlier, the increased public participation, the engagement and the participation. It's been absolutely amazing to watch, again, over the past decade, the involvement from our The involvement from our citizens showing up to council meetings to speaking. Our council has really taken value in providing those opportunities before and after the council meetings. And when there's things that want to be shared, clearly they're shared. And when there's things that don't need to be shared, they're not. And I just, I love the opportunities that we provide. We have full boards and commissions, which has never, you know, we've been working at that and it continues to improve. We still have some opportunities if you are interested. So please apply. On eleven seven, we do have a joint work session with planning and zoning. And if you look in the back of the room, I'm sure you can see some equipment in a cage. And I wanted to share that tomorrow when you head to the polls, remember that your vote is more than just a piece of paper. It is your voice in action. And each ballot cast represents hopes, dreams and aspirations for our community and for our country. It's your opportunity to express what you believe in and envision for our future. So with that, please vote. I don't care how you vote. I just care that you vote. With that, we need a motion to dismiss or adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.